All right. I call the order, the 2023 Annual Meeting. Start with the President of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome.
We don't realize this tonight.
Yeah, that's right.
They don't realize.
But it was supposed to happen myself.
It was supposed to the beginning of the year, too.
Yeah, we used to have our meetings on the first Tuesday. We used to have that on the first Monday of the month.
Yeah, like we used to have the annual meetings on Saturday.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Oh!
Yeah, back in the day. Okay, um, we need to approve the agenda.
You're doing the annual meeting first, right?
Right. We need someone to approve.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Oh, can you guys sign in one minute, second?
Sign in.
We do assign, we last year we get a sign in. We work by the minutes from here.
Okay, we had a motion and support to approve the agenda. Anything else?
Who supported? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
You guys have to go as well.
Yeah, just give me a second. I have to rearrange my thing.
We'll speak after the meeting.
Yeah, no.
All right, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, so we have a motion support. Um, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the minutes for the March eighth, two thousand twenty-two annual meeting.
Make the motion, the minutes of the meeting be approved as presented.
Support. Again, the table.
Okay, we have a motion and support to approve the mention of March eighth, two thousand twenty-two annual meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the annual meeting.
This meeting, we're supposed to vote, too.
Right.
It's the annual meeting.
Yep, hold on.
I think we can vote on other things.
We can vote on everything.
The annual meeting is a meeting of the residents of Casco Township and not the electoral. Any resident eighteen years or older may vote on the official salary to increase or keep the same. However, any other matters discussed or meeting are advisory only. Okay, elected official. A is approved clerk salary resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-two for forty-two thousand dollars.
So move.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion support to approve the clerk salary at forty-two thousand dollars a year. Any other discussion? Um, I checked on this. Um, it's still for our size township. In our SEU population, it still falls. Still not near that high yet, but it still falls. Okay, all in favor?
No.
We need a hand.
Everybody on this, five, raise a hands.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay, six. Okay, approve the treasure salary resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero three for twenty-nine thousand four hundred and seven and fifty-three sets.
So move.
I'll support.
We have a motion support to approve the treasure salary for resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero three for twenty-nine thousand four hundred and seven dollars and fifty-three sets. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the trustee salary.
We need to count. We need to count.
Six.
Okay.
Remember how we used to get the youngest person there? Well, that would be you, Vicky, huh?
I'm a trustee, yeah.
Approve the trustee salary of resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four and two thousand twenty-three dash zero five, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and per diem of eighty-two dollars.
I so move.
I'll support.
You have a motion support to approve the trustee salary resolution twenty-three dash zero four and twenty-three dash zero five for eight hundred and forty-six dollars and a per diem of eighty-two dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Six. Vote for myself?
You can.
Yeah.
Sure.
Because you're vote for Dan.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Approve the supervisor salary resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero six for twenty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars.
I so move.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion support to approve the supervisor salary resolution twenty-three dash, two thousand twenty-three dash zero six for twenty thousand five hundred and fifty-one. All in favor? Okay, I'm abstaining.
You don't want to abstain?
You don't got to abstain.
I want to.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, any matters of concern to the residents?
The date's wrong.
What's that?
The date on your agenda is wrong.
Um, which date?
So. You have March eighth?
No, that was last year's minutes.
Last year's minutes.
Oh, that was through last year's minutes. Okay, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. Okay, um, if there's no any matters of concern to the residents, um, we're up to adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
You have to give me a second. So, I need, you know, with Colleen.
Yep.
Send Dan.
All right. We're gonna get you there.
All right.
Okay.
And I should move them.
All right.
All right, now we'll let you get situated.
So I don't lose, okay? All right. Call the order.
Okay, this is a follow the order of the regular meeting for Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Okay, we have the consent agenda, the first on the, uh.
With two additions.
With two additions, well, actually, three additions. We have J, Tuma Watson, Whaling and Curry and Castilio. That's the Golden Hough appraisal invoice. Even though it falls behind under the amount where the clerk's office could have paid it, since we're doing this appraisal, I want the board to vote on it. The second one is high-tech.
Isn't that under new business?
Yeah, under new business. And then we have K under new business. It's high-tech quote HTSQ one four eight two five. Vicky will explain that when we get there. And L is high-tech quote HTSQ one three eight eight eight.
I have an example, I want to.
Yeah, so it's kind of. Any other additions?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, the agenda.
Oh, yeah, consent agenda?
The consent agenda and with the two additions.
It's three, because I don't think the tumor wasn't on the left side, right?
Right.
So that is three additions.
Yep.
Please make sure that you have, um, the right financial report. I had a last minute, um.
Got it. Sure.
I think I, I think, I think I put the right one down here.
Yeah, yeah, I made sure.
Okay, very good. And I motion stands.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion support for the consent agenda. Any question? All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, citizens' comments.
Anything that's not agenda, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, I'm asking the board to possibly consider the purchase of a generator, a backup generator system, because we have experienced numerous power outages over the weekend when we're not here.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're talking with the architect, Chris, about some of the generators included.
Okay.
Yeah.
You may have an election before that's done.
Yeah.
And we did experience one election where we ran out of power and Wayne Baumgarten had three generators that he brought on election day.
Yeah, we, we have a generator right out in the shed right now. We'll have to fire it up and make sure.
These generators would automatically kick in and use our powers.
I, I know.
That's my point.
Okay, the gen, my generator, I put it a few years ago. The cost of generating the hookup electric and gas was about seven thousand.
How much? About that.
Seven, really?
Mine, too.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Now, it powers everything in my house except air conditioning. That's the only thing. So, let's say we had some, yeah, something like that. I mean, it takes care of all the basics, it does air conditioning. Air conditioning generator would have been like double the cost, so that's why I didn't get it. So, okay, all right, thanks, Brenda.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other citizens' comment, we have long-term maintenance service agreement with D and E Landscaping. There was questions there about, um, last month, because there was a, um, a fall cleanup and they said, well, you have to check that off. On the back, you see the thing, you have to check mark for service. So one would be weekly mowing and trimming and bi-weekly edging. Two would be a spring cleanup. And three would be a fall cleanup. So, we just have to make sure we mark all three. And, um, how many times, are we, want just a one-year contract, you think it'd be?
I'm not sure yet, but I'm looking at that price per hour. It's fifty-five thousand. You can hear Andrew come do it. She's with a, a fall and winter cleanup.
Okay.
Andrew.
McDonald Cemetery.
Okay, all right, so.
I just, that's just my suggestion. I know I am saying anything, but I don't know what you guys want to do.
All right, well, okay, if you want to cut the cost down, but we just have to understand when in the fall we have to get Andrew.
Yeah.
Or that.
I don't think there's any problem with that.
No, Andrew will come anytime.
Last, last fall, Dave tried clearing it, but his weed trimmer wasn't big enough to get those weeds, so. Okay, we'll, we'll go with the, um, the weekly mowing, trimming, bi-weekly edging. We'll go with a one-year contract, okay? Okay? So, because they won't want to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion and we go with D and E landscaping and grading for a one-year contract for the, hmm, services.
Hall and cemetery?
Yeah, hall and cemetery, weekly mow and trim.
Hall and cemetery, weekly mow, weekly mowing.
And trimming and bi-weekly edging.
All right.
Okay.
Support.
Support, we have a motion support. Uh, higher D and E landscaping, one-year contract for weekly mowing and trimming, bi-weekly edging of the township hall ground and the cemeteries. Okay, price per time is sixty-three dollars for township hall and one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-three cents for the cemetery. Okay, roll call vote.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, I'll give a call tomorrow, sign this and get this going. Okay, first one thing is budget hearing. I'll make a, um, I need a motion and support to open the budget hearing. And we got a written note with that.
Move to open the budget hearing.
Do you have a support?
Yes, Stover supports.
And that is at seven oh eight?
Fifteen.
Oh, seven fifteen? Seven fifteen. Okay. There's any questions on the budget?
This is a public hearing, right?
Yeah.
So how did we fare, uh, in our, in our containment of what you projected and what we actually spent, if I may ask?
Yeah, I mean, we have a very healthy, uh, um, fund balance.
Fund balance.
Yeah. And that's what, you know, I'm learning this stuff. You know, you may have heard my misadventure doing this budget. But the one thing there that, um, I read were the townships that get themselves in trouble, uh, people, townships that build a new hall or a new fire hall. Luckily, we got, well, with the COVID, with the ARPA money, we were able to do a lot of renovations and more to come. If it wasn't for that, you know, what we were doing would be.
Well, when the township hall was paid in cash, we took out no loans.
Yeah.
To build and, and finish the township hall.
You know, even though we want to accomplish stuff, um, here, I still want to be fiscally conservative. And when people, if bad times hit, we have a good cushion for us. Uh, that's how I live my personal life. Maybe sometimes I live a little bit too frugal.
Budget.
And we've had a good tradition for many, many years. I don't think, from your thing, ever since you've been in the rock.
No, we've been building, the general fund, or the, the fund balance has been, uh, building up over the years, over the last ten years. And so we have a very healthy fund balance.
But we only get, put a certain amount in, other than we have to spend it.
Well, no, we don't have to spend it. We, we have, a lot of our, our money is in savings and savings. And, uh, just like this month, if you'll notice the, uh, the financial report, we have far too much money at this point in the general fund. Uh, we're only insured for X amount of money and five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
What, okay, what does that mean? Do they expect us, I mean.
We, we, you, you put that aside, put it in a CD, put it in a, uh, and a money market, whatever. You don't keep it in your general fund, not that kind of money. We're not insured for that kind of money.
Our long-term savings.
Yes, our long-term savings. And, and if, and if we think that something like building a new addition is, is going to take money that we don't want to bond out for, we don't want to borrow, we want to use our general, or our, our fund balance for that, then I put it in, uh, CDs that, uh, for, you know, six months, three months, six months, a year. I, I can still get, on a, on a hundred thousand dollars, I can still get at this point, um, almost four percent.
Yeah.
Which is better than keeping it in a, in a checking account.
With property values going up, that also put a lot of money, you know, towards us, but, um, yeah, it's, but I never want to get.
No, I don't think, I don't see.
We're very.
That we would, I mean, not unless we start paving roads, for goodness sakes.
Yeah, well, we'll explore other, there's other avenues of funding before we ever go there. So I've been talking to some people at the road commission about like, um, D and E road during industrial district, what are some options?
Well, I prefer the option of having the, the industries that are using the road.
Yeah.
Bond the road.
Yeah, yeah. Or else if we can't, we give some of those money for developing the corridors.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
But I'll discuss more of that in a little bit. Okay, any other questions about the budget? Okay, if there's any questions, I think it's time to close the public hearing. Need a motion.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
Okay, closing support, and that's what, is it seven eighteen? Okay. Oh.
I have nineteen, but that was Dan's support.
Yeah.
Except, I, to accept the twenty-three, twenty-four budget for Casco Township.
Thank you, support.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to, um, accept the two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-four budget for Casco Township. Okay, roll call vote.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Oh, Stover, yes. I'm already spending money in my head.
Okay, this is one, okay. Proposal for master plan update from Casson Planning Group. Okay. We haven't did a full-blown master plan review in nearly twenty years. Is it, every five years, a community by law has to review their master plan. Now, in the last twenty years, it could be a simple renewal by the vote of the planning commission. We had some minor tweaks. Well, there's been some changes. Okay, one, there, with the ARPA money there, the, the, okay, the sewage treatment plant in Clay Township, that serves as Almanac Clay Township, Ira Township, is at capacity. It's fifty years old. They want to build a new one in Ira Township. They'll supply more. And they want to bring a sewer main along Marine City Highway from Beezy Road down to Starville Road in Cottonville Township. That's a long way, that includes a lot of real estate. Now, some of the county commissioners are against it. They think it should be divided up equally among the townships. Um, I was told by our county commissioner, Dave Rushing, who opposes using the ARPA money for that, that Casco would get five hundred thousand. I told him regardless of that, and Casco needs to be prepared, regardless if they put in a sewer main along Marine City Highway using ARPA funds or Ira Township bonds for it, I want Casco to direct the future development and not done by a court. Our planner, Steve Casson, was a planner for Clinton Township back in the seventies and early eighties. They wanted to develop Hall Road. Hall Road, they didn't have a robust master plan and a lot of that property was dictated court action. I know, I'm more, I mean, I've been here all my life. I grew up on a township road. My dad was bill inspector. Do I wish Casco was back like more rural like it used to be? You bet, but that's not the life we live in. For every new house built on farm, land that was recently farmed or in the woods, it's making Casco a little less rural and a little bit more suburban in nature. Plus, that sewer main, you're gonna, that's, okay, water's something, but when you put sewer, that's gonna attract development. And the county, some of the board of commissioners want to attract these businesses, these large manufacturing firms here. Do I wish they would redevelop older areas of Detroit to have those? You betcha. But the cost of it, to bring real estate together, to clean it up, these companies don't want it. They don't even have to invest anything. Preferably, they want the land given to them. They build the plan and then they get a fifteen-year tax break down south. They give them a thirty-year tax break in some of those states. So that's, and those companies know that and they pick communities against communities. And there's several corridors just in southeastern Michigan, not to mention the rest of Michigan in the United States, or else it could go to another country. And those companies are getting away with it. And if we're caught in this thing of, um, corporate socialism, you know, they hope that in the, you know, payment comes over, you know, in the long run, they get the tax benefit once these tax breaks in. So, um, so I want to prepare the township that we have a Long Marine City Highway just a half mile deep like a, in here to allow light industry around Hall, um, Palms Road, like a commercial district.
In other words, updating the plan.
Yeah.
Would protect the township from court actions and, uh,
Exactly.
More on the track, certainly, that we want to be on.
And part of, part of updating this master plan will be like what we had twenty years ago. Community involvement.
And I've asked Anita there, Channel Six, to film all of our planning commission meetings and that, so no one can say, well, we're doing behind the scene. No, it's gonna be in people's face.
It's time we do that.
And our master plan, I'm.
I think we need to bring our master plan up here.
There's a gentleman, there's a gentleman on Lynn's, um, Springborne Road. I want to have him build a couple of things to put the zoning map and master plan up there. So, um, and also to build a display case, too, Keith, and, um.
So, Mr. Cassons is proposing, um, a totally new look at our master plan, our current master plan.
Yeah, to, to do, to go through the steps of a full-blown master plan review.
And this, this would include coordinating, as you say, all meetings and preparing public notices. And that will also include having public meetings, having people into the township like we did with, yes, all of that.
Yeah, look on the back.
Yeah, all of that.
Yeah. So he's asking for a total cost of seven thousand two hundred dollars. I think Steve Casson does an excellent job as planner. I trust him implicitly. He has an excellent reputation among.
And when would he like to commence?
Yeah, April kickoff meeting with the commission.
Wow.
Pretty quick.
Anita Kazinsky here is our point person on that.
Pretty quick.
Yeah.
I'll move that we adopt his, adopt the proposal from, or approve the proposal from Casson Planning Group to redo our master plan. We deserve our master plan. And, uh, at a cost of seven thousand two hundred dollars.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion support to support the proposal to repair master plan from Casson Planning Group LLC for seven thousand two hundred dollars. Okay, any further questions? Okay, roll call vote.
Olson, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Yeah, Americans, we don't use our land efficiently, but that's the federal structure we, you know, our country is and plus, um. Okay. Okay, right there, I, okay. I was hoping to have a resolution for application of Michigan D and R resources trust program. However, there's a bit of a miscommunication. Our last two, um, our last three was, I could have a simple agenda item for resolution. Well, this, I had to send out public notice to have a bona fide public hearing. It was a miscommunication between me and Pam. So I'm gonna have to, we're gonna have to set a public meeting date and publish it.
Will we still make our deadline?
Yeah, oh, yeah. We have to have it by one, we have to, most of the work for this is already Pam and Keith done, most of it. We just need to, um, have a, a public hearing, pass this resolution by April first, and I probably need to get some letters of, um, support from some. So, but look at the cost there. The D and R would contribute, contribute two thousand eighty, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Casco Township would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Grant would over be four hundred thousand. I didn't.
I'm gonna go for it.
Yeah, I didn't include it there, the price. It's more than what Pam, but she said we ought to use more money.
Absolutely.
You don't charge down the free money.
Yeah, who, okay, what dates are good for you? I mean, you guys are, everyone here, eleven.
At eleven o'clock, whatever.
Okay, and you're, all right.
So we're post-bank, right?
Yeah. I had to send out, okay, I'll set a public meeting. I'll get with the C about, take later for someone notice, it was seven a.m.
What date? Oh, you haven't said it yet?
Yeah.
Give me a call.
Okay.
I mean, just because I got some page fragments.
Gotcha, understand. Okay. All right, yeah, this one, the requirement to have a public hearing is different than the past quarter as far as. Okay, next thing is project control engineering. Yeah, the, the clerk's office is just asking us, um, to add a fifteen-dollar administrative fee for every bill we have to process through them. Um, project control, John Montez, who they look at, they do our engineering reviews. Instead of them billing the applicant, they build the township and then the township bills the applicant. Why they do that is the township can exert more control over the project than project engineering. That's why they want to do that. It's just that the clerk's office is wanting an administrative fee.
Also, can I say something?
No, absolutely.
We did go back in the minutes and originally you guys approved that they had to build them directly and that was never changed. The only thing that changed when me and Barbara were looking through everything was that they weren't just gonna be, sometimes that they were gonna do all of them. And it's not just as easy as collecting money and handing money over. There's paperwork, there's checks, I mean, there's. There's paperwork, there's checks, I mean, there's.
Yeah, I understand.
There's administration.
There's administrative work.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
And I talked to John, John.
Did Mr. Money agree to the fifteen-dollar?
Yeah, I, I talked to him, he's had no problem with that. Of course, it gets billed to the applicant anyways, everyone's had. So. But yeah, okay. Do you think we need a motion on this, or?
Who came up with fifteen dollars?
What's that?
Who came up with fifteen dollars?
I thought that's what you guys said.
I, I just, no.
Okay, you wanna?
I don't know, you can let your talk to Jennifer, I don't.
For some reason, yeah, we'll, we'll review that. Okay, we'll ask them about that.
Should we make a motion?
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, we can make a motion to whatever the clerk's office decides is.
I just, I didn't know, that's what you were talking about.
I wanted to do the fifteen-dollar administrative fee.
Well, let's just say, make a motion to whatever the clerk's office determines.
I don't think you can do that.
Okay.
I, I think you have to, you have to have an amount. I don't think the fifteen dollars is unreasonable to look over a project, you know, and do the, the follow-up paperwork. Let's start with that, we'll keep that, we'll see how it goes and we'll review it in the coming year. We'll, we'll see how many projects we have, what the paperwork is, you know? And, but let's start out with a fee of fifteen dollars.
Motion, Gina?
Yes.
Okay, motion support to charge fifty-dollar administrative fee for project controls, engineering reviews. Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, we have a pay increase for Deputy Clerk Vicki Hoff, who, this is because of the cost of living increase of four point six percent with effect of April first, twenty twenty-three, so it's ninety-seven cents.
Dollar.
No, you wanted to discuss the matter. You want us to go into executive session for you?
I'll talk to the board first.
Okay, well, when we have a special meeting for that, we'll, okay, absolutely. Okay, yeah, dollars. Daniel, was that your?
No, I just, yeah, but we can do that.
Okay. Okay, okay, give him a motion for a dollar and hour raise for Deputy Clerk Vicki Hoff and you.
I'll support it.
Support that, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
And Vicki, you do good.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, we have Deputy Treasurer Linda Team is asking for a pay raise for twenty twenty-three, one dollar per hour. And Linda is excellent.
Well, of course, Linda's been with me for over twenty years now and of course I will make a motion to give her the one-dollar raise. I do want to mention something that's coming up in the future that was a little bit of a surprise to me, but it only enhances our office. The, I'm going to, I'm going to keep my motion at one dollar for this meeting and for, and for this, this time period. However, the assessor has come to me and told me that in the future, immediately in the future, the state of Michigan is requiring training for assessors and support staff. Support staff is the deputy assessor. With this training, she will get certification. It's, in many parts, this training is. And what we will have then, in effect, hopefully, if it all goes well, and I think it will, Casco Township only employs an assessor one day a week in the office. Questions arise quite, quite often. With the assessor's assistant getting this additional certification, we will be able to answer questions with authority without having to make people wait too much longer or referring them to the assessor. And so, while I'm agreeing to the dollar right now, rest assured that when Linda has that certification, I will be asking for a little bit more on top of it. Her duties will, it's not that her duties will increase 'cause she already does quite a bit of what she does, but the authority to do what she does will increase.
Also, like too with the clerks, with the early voting, that's gonna be tremendous time.
Yeah.
We're gonna have.
So anyway, I just want to make you aware of that new state ruling that's come down with certified support staff being required.
Okay, okay, we have a motion to give Linda, Deputy Treasurer Linda Team, a dollar.
I'll support that.
Okay, motion support, any questions? Roll call vote.
Olson, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, we have right now Brenda Lober. She's our senior building department clerk and she is also looking for a one dollar an hour raise.
I make motion to give Mrs. Lober the one-dollar raise that she requests.
Support.
My gratitude.
Yes, and a motion support. Brenda does excellent work. She keeps that building department humming, she keeps me in line.
Well, that's worth a dollar, isn't it?
I think all you guys.
A lot of work in that department.
Keeps rolling in lines. Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion.
I did, I support it.
Okay, motion support, any question? Okay, roll call vote.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay.
Okay, if I could, you didn't address the second portion of my request. I would at another time like to be offered the opportunity to meet with the board.
Okay, how about when we do the meeting, when?
Well, we, we can talk about it.
Okay.
I'd like to inform the president, as you asked Vicki if she wanted the closed meeting.
Okay. All right, and we have Katie Holt, she's our junior building clerk. She, Katie, she does good work, she has a great attitude and this young woman is taking college classes to herself.
I make a motion to, to increase Katie Holt's pay by one dollar.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to increase Katie Holt's pay by one dollar. Roll call vote.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next thing here, we have, okay, where is it? We have our, this is for the, the assessment for Golden Hawk. Okay, right here. It's four hundred and five dollars, this is, so we're doing that right now, so to wrap that up. So, Golden Hawk, just like we did Michigan Meadows, are assessed fairly. Golf courses are hard to do, but we need to, we need to go through this.
So, we need a motion to approve this four hundred and five dollar.
That's correct.
I so moved.
Support.
Okay, a motion support to pay two Malekso, Will, Cory, and Greeners for the balance of the Golden Hawk appraisal. Okay, any question? Okay, roll call vote.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, okay, K, this is quote HTSQ one four two five.
What these are is the power grid. 'Cause surgeons, that Linda's just in that storm, fried it and when Jay from High Tech walked around, he realized like yours is over ten years old and so is Shelley's and then like, where's, we don't even have our anodistere, so if it does do something, or is your plug right in the walls? Not necessarily blow up the computer, but it'll mess it up. And even your laptop when you're in the office, Joe, he said you should have that plugged in, one of those.
Now, which one is this, is this the quantity of seven?
That's the seven, so the total price would be one thousand thirteen dollars to make sure, I mean, because Linda's was already ordered 'cause hers already died.
Okay.
And it's just to make sure that we're all protected with all the stones that we're having and stuff like that.
So, one thousand, boy, they're expensive, so.
Well, they're, they're power battery backup wells, so I mean, yeah, and they're. It's not one that you buy at Home Depot, you plug in, you know.
Right, okay. All right, so we need a motion support to get this equipment.
We make a motion that we approve the quote from High Tech for seven of these units for the cost of one thousand thirteen dollars.
What's the part?
Okay, we have motion support to approve the, the backup towers from High Tech. Okay, roll call vote.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, I have to pull out my phone to explain this one completely to you guys. All right, 'cause I had to ask, and he said it's replacing your existing network switch, your existing switches, a tier-one switch, which is not a manageable switch. And it's, he doesn't even think it's an existing power over ethernet, which is not the.
Can't hear that, Vicki, I didn't hear what you said.
Because it's replacing your existing network switch. Your existing switch is a tier-one switch, it's not a manageable switch. I, and he, he said it's not a power over ethernet, which isn't good for our system that we have now. So, this would be, this is just one of the things he said that needed to be done as soon as possible to get us, you know, where we need to be and then everything else is manageable along the way.
Yeah, I tell you what, High Tech, even though we've been with them almost a year, in some ways they may be crazy, but boy, their support is great. Couple weeks ago, I had something where BSN eight, I called up Solomon, had it fixed in minutes.
I don't think I waited over five minutes for anything. And even when Linda had no problem, he was out here in ten minutes and had it fixed in several minutes.
I, I was, I was on a weekend retreat, but my phone, on Sunday afternoon when I turned it on, High Tech called me about the power outage here. So, yeah, they're, so they mined our computers and.
Next month I should have, like, he, he came in and did like an overview of everything and I'll put something together for you guys next month so you can see everything. And like, it tells us when we should replace our computers. I took a lot of notes from him, he told me everything, but he kind of put something together for you guys and it just kind of explains everything, you know, the wiring, the way it is now because it's on outside walls, like sitting on the floor.
Yeah.
But that all contingent on what would come to do with the expansion and having another. So, I mean, that stuff is gonna work eventually 'cause it does need to get done. And then the, the wiring that was put in when the new addition was put in wasn't the best to begin with. So, that's something to look at. I know Mr. Hawke has talked about that stuff when he was here too. I, I'm not really, I don't know all the lingo for the IT stuff. I can always ask them to comment and explain things and if that's something you guys want to.
Yeah.
But he, I have a folder stuff and I guess I took notes and I'll have, he explains everything and he does that whole really, so.
Okay, all right, so we have this cost, it's two thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars.
I make a motion to accept the quote for the Hewlett Packard Aruba Instant On switch and the materials that go with it for a cost of two thousand three hundred thirteen dollars.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion support, roll call vote.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
I hope I explained that.
Yeah.
As well, as well as I can understand whatever you're explaining.
This is for the offset, be careful, there is emails going out. Yeah.
Yes, I had one today, Jennifer had one. And I'm not, with this, with the, with the new, what is this, what is the new?
Direct magazine?
No. I'm my, I, I like my old email, I'll tell you that. I don't like the new one that we use.
Outlook.
Outlook, I don't like Outlook. But when I use Outlook and it, it's something to do with the township, I look and my eye is not that well-trained yet. And so, we almost got scammed today. Well, we wouldn't have because I would have never sent out the money, I never would have. But it's funny how you don't think to look at those different clues that tell you this is, you know.
Anybody, if you see an email like that, don't click on it, call High Tech immediately.
Yeah.
Brenda, if you see anything like that.
We get a lot of quarantine, so didn't quarantine your email?
Yeah.
No, I, no.
I don't mind your quarantine, you have to go over the SOFOs and you have to accept it or not.
I just deleted it.
Even though we have protection, there's some smart people trying to get around that all the time. So. Okay. Any more citizens' comments? Okay.
I'm good.
Anything?
Okay, board, board comments? We're looking for members to fill the Parks and Recs Committee. I'm looking for five to seven people, I've had two so far, that are wanting to be on the Parks and Recs Committee. I need one or two border review alternates to bring them on, to get them in, 'cause a couple of our border review members are out there in years and I like to train interested individuals. If anybody who is interested in serving on the Casco Township Parks and Recs Committee and/or be a border review alternate, please contact Township Hall and talk to myself and I'll give out details. Okay, any further? Okay, I think we're up for adjournment.
So, move. Support.
We have a motion, support to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right.